I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you all for being here. We'll move on to public participation. This is limited items described in the notes for this meeting. If you are here to talk about 4A, I'm going to ask that you wait for your comments until that matter. All right, public participation will remain open throughout the duration of this meeting, so feel free to talk throughout. Moving on to declaration of conflicts of interest and disqualifications, looking left and right, seeing none, we will move on to item 4A. Request to accept the draft report from Kemper CPA Group LLP for the agreed upon procedures audit pertaining to the agreement for tourism services, CBB, between the City of Turlock and Turlock Chamber of Commerce, request to authorize Kemper CPA LLP to issue the final report, and request to authorize the mayor to represent the council and take any and all action necessary to resolve the audit exceptions identified in the final report. Before I call up Administrative Services Director Hunter, I just wanted to welcome everyone to be, everyone here. I want to thank everyone for being here on this special meeting on short notice. I especially want to thank the interim CEO and President Paul Wright for being here and all the members of the chamber board. It should be known that I stand firmly behind the process that led to tonight's meeting. I want to commend staff, especially the city attorney and Administrative Services Director, for their diligent, patient, and professional work. They have given sound advice to this council throughout the process of obtaining outside accountants. When the council unanimously voted to conduct this independent third-party audit, the vote demonstrated to the public that this city's leaders hold ourselves accountable, not only for taxpayer funds spent inside City Hall, but also taxpayer funds spent through contracts for outside services. This is not a meeting to be defensive, this is not a meeting to be protective, and this is not a meeting to cast blame. This is a meeting to look at the facts objectively, without being blinded by emotion. We owe it to the taxpayers of Turlock to be honest with ourselves and to look at the numbers through an unfiltered lens. Public participation will remain open throughout the entire presentation, so please ask questions of the presenters. You can speak from your seat, but we will pass the microphone around from the side table here. Again, I hope this can be a candid, constructive conversation that ultimately leads to both internal and external reforms in the manner in which Turlock executes its contracts. And hopefully tonight's action item will be accepted so the city and the chamber can start to heal a broken partnership. With that, I will turn it over to the Administrative Services Director Kelly Jacobs-Hunter to introduce the accountants of Kemper CPA.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. The item on the agenda tonight is the review of the draft report from Kemper CPA Group LLP for agreed-upon procedures pertaining to the tourism services agreement between the City of Turlock and the Turlock Chamber of Commerce. I'll give a brief history. At the February tenth Turlock City Council meeting, the Turlock Chamber of Commerce elected to terminate the agreement for tourism services with the City of Turlock. The chamber submitted a formal ninety-day notice with an effective termination date of May third, two thousand fifteen. On April first, the city attorney emailed a letter to the Turlock Chamber of Commerce requesting financial and accounting information as outlined in the agreement to begin the winding down process of the agreement so we could close everything out. On April sixth, the city was provided with copies of the general ledger, balance sheet, and profit and loss statements for the CBB activities for calendar years two thousand nine through two thousand fourteen. We reviewed the documentation and compiled a list of transactions that we wanted additional information on. A letter was emailed to the Chamber of Commerce on April fourteenth requesting the additional information, and we asked that it was provided on or before April twenty-fourth. On April twenty-third, the additional information was received. City staff reviewed the documentation and compared the transactions to the agreement and all the amendments, and we came up with a list of certain transactions that could have been potentially unallowable under the agreement. We then emailed another letter to the chamber outlining those transactions and asking to meet with them to discuss and review, and if they had any further documentation that they could provide. That's what we had hoped, to get them more information so we could determine whether they were compliant or not. We met with Chamber of Commerce representatives on April twenty-seventh. Another meeting was held March first, and the purpose of that meeting was to review that list of transactions, see if the chamber had more documentation for us. And then a final list, a staff list, was compiled and brought before the council. The council elected on May twelfth to enter into a professional services agreement with an outside auditing and accounting firm to conduct a formal review of the Convention and Visitors Bureau. The city sent out an RFP after that meeting. We returned on May twenty-sixth with an agreement and asked the council to approve it, and that was on May twenty-sixth. We entered into the agreement, and they have now been, Kemper CPA Group was awarded the agreement, and they've now been working diligently, and they are here tonight with the draft report to present to council. And so I will introduce them and give them an opportunity to go over the report. So from Kemper CPA Group, I have Lamert Van Lahr and September Reeves. So I'll turn it over to them, and then I am available for questions, too. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lamert, and I'm a partner with Kemper CPA Group and in charge of our Stockton office. And this is September Reeves, she's a partner with us as well, and her primary function with us is in the audit and assurance area. So she did a lot of the detailed work under my direction. And so the resulting report, this is an agreed-upon procedures engagement, which is different than an audit, I just want to point that out. I know sometimes people use the term "audit" interchangeably with a lot of other things, but basically what this is, is an agreement with the City of Turlock to apply certain procedures that we've agreed to, and they're outlined in the report, and applying those procedures to certain transactions and/or account balances. So it's not an audit, but it's more focused and restricted to the terms, the agreed-upon procedures within the letter here. Now those agreed-upon procedures, if I may, constituted, number one, reviewing the agreement and all associated amendments along with all approved City of Turlock Council actions related to the agreement. Number two, apply the terms of the agreement and all amendments to financial documentation from the Turlock Chamber of Commerce to determine compliance under the agreement. Number three, review the Turlock Chamber of Commerce internal controls related to the agreement and to determine the adequacy of those procedures as it related to the expenses charged under the agreement. Number four, test transactions selected by City of Turlock to determine compliance under the agreement. Number five, review all transactions recorded in the general ledger for each year and test transaction that appear irregular. And number six, review all transactions expensed under chamber administration in the general ledger for each year to determine compliance under the agreement. And lastly, seven, perform other related services as directed by the City of Turlock as it pertains to the agreement. So that is basically what we were charged with doing. As it was mentioned, there were a selection of transactions that the city made itself, there were a hundred and twelve of those, that we looked at and applied these procedures to. We also reviewed the general ledger and selected an additional eighty-one transactions that we thought, you know, could bear some scrutiny. So with that, we proceeded to request information, documentation about those expenditures and transactions, and gathered together what was provided, reviewed that in conjunction with the agreement and its terms. And as well, I think we made inquiries of staff regarding the expenditures and the purpose of those expenditures. And those, the results of all that are outlined in the attachments to the report. It's quite lengthy and sometimes hard to read because we had to put it in small print. And we basically laid out the detail to the transactions, the amounts, and what they were for, and then our conclusions regarding whether they were in compliance with the agreement or not. And as you know and have seen already, a lot of the transactions were not supported by invoices and receipts and things like that, and we call that supporting documentation. So without that supporting documentation, we took a conservative approach and called those not in compliance with the agreement because there was nothing there to really tell us or prove to us what the expenses were actually paid for. For instance, if you had, say, a credit card statement that we were provided, and there's line items on there for a hotel or Office Depot or something like that, that really doesn't show us or tell us what those monies were expended for. A hotel could be lodging, could be meals, could be bar charges, could be, you know, some other items. Office Depot could be equipment, could be stationary supplies, could be a lot of different things. So that in and of itself, a credit card statement is not going to provide you the support for the expenditure. And I liken that to, say, the IRS. If the taxpayer is, has some deductions and you get audited, the IRS is going to want to see some supporting documentation for that. They want to see proof of payment, which would be your canceled check or receipt. They want to see invoices and receipts to prove what that was for. If you don't have those invoices and receipts, the deduction is disallowed, okay? So that's kind of the way we looked at this and approached it. You know, if you don't have the supporting documentation, then, you know, we're not sure, we can't be sure that it is compliant with the agreement. The agreement calling for services and the like for the Visitors Bureau. So you'll see a lot of those items in there are basically non-compliant because of that. If we were provided those documents, that might then allow us to say, well, yes, it is compliant. Some of the explanations for some of those expenditures, I mean, it seemed like they would be appropriate, but without documentation, we can't give our blessing on it. So that's why those were excluded. Others, some expenditures may be questionable as to their purpose and how they really relate to the Visitors Bureau and its functions, and those are outlined in there as well. And some of them may be excluded because of overspending. In other words, some of the expenses exceeded what the budgeted amounts were. So those might get set aside because of that as well. So that's kind of a short little synopsis of what we've done. And like I said, the results, it's quite lengthy because of the number of transactions that we did. So if there's any specific questions about any of those or about the procedures or how we arrived at our conclusions, then I'd like to open it up to that.
Thank you. Is it possible for you to go over some of the summaries real quick of, to what some of the totals are of non-compliant values? Do you have those with you?
The ones, the ones mentioned in the, in the, in the report, the two-page?
Correct, correct, yes.
Okay. We added some statistics to the report in the, in the back of it. We found that fifty-four percent of the transactions selected for review did not have sufficient or proper supporting documentation. The total dollar value of the transactions without sufficient or proper documentation was two hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. Those were a hundred and five different transactions. Transactions with adequate support were eighty-seven and total two hundred and three thousand. There was one with partial support for fifteen hundred and sixty-one dollars. Transactions with adequate or partial support, ninety-seven thousand five ninety was considered compliant with the agreement, a hundred and seven considered non-compliant. Total dollar value of the selected transactions is four hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. That kind of gives you the idea of the breadth of coverage that we had.
Thank you. So at this time, as I said, we'll have a microphone. Please wait till I can recognize you so that we have some order to this. But for now, I'll bring to the council, see if there's any opening questions, but I will keep looking into the public if there are questions there. So council, are there any questions for Lamert?
Yes, Councilman Ossmano. Can you explain the difference between, you said this wasn't an audit in terms of accounting terms. Can you explain the difference between, maybe elaborate a little bit more, what an audit would have looked like versus what was done here?
Typically with an audit, you're going to be potentially confirming with third parties certain amounts. The audits typically are, they take into account a greater view of the organization and what transactions transpired, the controls that are in place, the inherent risks associated with it, and then the auditor would design their tests of the transactions to verify or come to their opinion on whether or not they're stated fairly in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. That's pretty much what the, what the audit does. It's a lot more in-depth review of it. Agreed-upon procedures focuses in on just those transactions and just those agreed-upon procedures. So, you know, if we were applying audit procedures to it, we might come up with some different information, or we might be able to confirm with third parties some of the transactions, things like that, or what they were about. So this was not as intense, I would say, or as organization-wide as an audit might be, but it was just focused on, on these transactions.
Yeah, Councilman Dehart.
Thank you, Mayor. Lamert, just a quick question on, in the same vein as previous question. By our own resolution, when we initially contacted your firm, the request in fact was made to conduct a formal accounting slash audit of the Convention and Visitors Bureau. Was there an ongoing discussion that determined that that would not be necessary in view of the definition and the explanation you provided? It just seems like one thing was requested, and we're now being presented with something else. Is there something I'm missing?
You know, I don't recall the, how it developed into an agreed-upon procedures engagement, although by, I think ultimately, the request that was put out, it was apparent that it was going to be an agreed-upon procedure engagement. In other words, we've got these limited transactions we want to look at, and certain things that we want you to do. And so that's how that ultimately came into our agreement. Now, if you were going to perform an audit for that length of time of all of those transactions that occurred from two thousand nine to present, it would be quite costly, much more so than, you know, the fee that was arrived at for the agreed-upon procedures. The focus is much more narrow, I said, on the agreed-upon procedures. The audit would be an organization-wide kind of look. And so I don't know where it got moved from audit, but like I said before, a lot of times people in their terminology may confuse the term "audit" for something else. Oftentimes, I think, members of the public, not knowing our technical accounting terms, you know, might call a compilation an audit. Well, that's, you know, really, compilation is just a reading of the financial statements and presentation, whereas the audit is going to be, you know, verification, risk assessment, designing of tests. See, we weren't left to design our own tests here. We were told what you wanted to do, what we wanted to see. So an audit, like I said, would be much more costly, and this was a way to get to the questionable items much more quickly and at much less cost.
Is there a staff member that can clarify some of the process that led from the vote that we took, Kelly, perhaps, to what Kemper CPA conducted?
Well, usually when you do an annual audit like the city is undergoing right now, is they're auditing our financial statements to see if they're true and correct. And just like Lamert said, they go through and they, they do lots of tests on our internal controls, how we process things. And Lamert, please correct me if I'm wrong, but the amount of testing they do to see if things are compliant with financial reports isn't as extensive as what we did here as the council wanted to see a report that told them if the CBB was managed in a way that was in agreement with the agreement and the amendments. Was it managed as the agreement said? And Lamert, please help me, but I don't know that a financial audit would have given them that answer as to whether the transactions were compliant with the agreement or not.
Basically, what you're asking for is a compliance audit and focused on specific transactions. If you were going to do an organization-wide audit, you likely would not have focused in on this many transactions on those particular accounts. You would take a sampling of a lot of different transactions, but maybe in different areas. Again, depending on the risk assessment and the auditor judgment on what needs to be looked at to arrive at an overall opinion on the financial statements as a whole. This was focused strictly on those transactions that the chamber carried on for the CBB.
Councilman Dehart, yes.
And I do appreciate that. Thank you very much for that clarification. We are only dealing with a hundred and five out of over nine hundred different transactions, so I'm trying to get a sense here as to what, what we're actually talking about. What had been mentioned is that we're dealing with a specific line item review. We're not talking necessarily about a cross-section of line items. So I'm trying to figure out if, are we, are we probing and attempting to determine if, in a specific area or a specific practice, that we don't feel we're getting the bang for the buck that we should? We're interested in finding out if it's compliant? Or are we just trying to find out, generally speaking, if we're compliant? If that makes sense.
The agreement that the city had with the Turlock Chamber of Commerce had certain items in the budget were capped by the agreement and the amendment. And so the focus was on that, because it was capped. There were some things that weren't capped. Yes, there was a budget adopted, but there were specific things that the amendments outlined that obviously previous councils had wanted to cap. And so we took a focus on those items. The regular routine transactions that are in there for office supplies and things like that, I wouldn't see the benefit of paying, you know, four or five times this amount to know that they bought pens and pencils and paper.
So the other seven hundred transactions are not, of no consequence, basically?
They, the ones that were selected were the ones that, looking at the agreement and the amendments and what the previous council intentions were, looking at those agreements and amendments, looking at their transactions and looking at them and saying, does this appear that it was done under, in compliance with the agreement? Or does it look like something that would fall outside of the agreement?
So compliance basically connoting then that we have exceeded a budgetary amount?
Or that it was for a CBB activity?
Or wasn't?
Correct.
Okay. I think I understand.
Yeah.
But my concern is, is that, you know, from time to time, we, we do shift funds from one line to another to accommodate an increase that was unexpected. Do we have any indication that that was the case in any of these particular transactions?
Yeah, in fact, we didn't look at, we didn't, in the end, we didn't take line item by line item. We took in total.
Okay.
And in, in total budget, regardless of line item, in two thousand ten, twelve, and fourteen, the council-approved budgets were exceeded each year in total. I mean, there were various line items within the other years that were exceeded, but in total, the budget, there was more expended than was approved by the council.
So just to make sure, we, we did our own internal review, search, and assessment of previous council minutes to ensure that it had never been brought up before in terms of raising the limits. Is that correct?
Yes, and we pulled all the council synopsises. When the chamber would come annually, they would go over the, what they had done the previous year. They would present their budget for the next year, and that was adopted by the council. And so, yeah, we went through there in the minutes, tried to scan to see if they had come back at any time to ask for amendments or changes.
And we found none?
We found none.
I have, I have a significant issue with that, just for discussion. I think that on two occasions that I can recall, we did in fact hear requests for increase in budgeted line items because we knew that it was going to cost more, or the chamber or the CBB.
Do you have the dates of those? Do you have?
I thought I had them. We received the two thousand six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen summaries, and some were embedded in there. I believe I recognized at least one, sir. And I'll see if I can dig it out. It's on my phone. I didn't have time to print it out. But, but I'm concerned that we, as we shift, is compliance also to say that we don't shift?
I'm not sure I understand.
In other words, if I've, if I've identified a hundred dollars for a specific line item, and all of a sudden I find out that it's going to cost a hundred and fifty, and so I take from Peter and pay Paul with that extra fifty bucks, is that granted or permissible under the terms of our agreements with the CBB?
The agreement said that they needed to return to council and ask for those amendments.
By line item, any increase needed to be
Right.
each and every single one of them, by agreement, okay.
That it said they need to return. But when we looked and we reviewed, we did it in total for year. And there were years that they presented their budget and it changed. And your, and the items went up and went down, and their budget went up and down. So it wasn't as though their budget was the same every year, and it was just a, you know, a stamp, you know, budget. They changed it, put things in, certain line items took it out, increased their admin, and the council approved that, and...
And perhaps that's what I'm recalling. I'm just trying to gain clarity here by asking these questions. There's no animus here. I'm attempting to pin down for future as an example. Let's don't go ask, go out next time and ask for a formal accounting slash audit if we don't mean a formal accounting slash audit. I believe that there is an issue to be made there. Thanks for the explanation, so I'm going to hold back on that particular point because it behooves us to move towards resolution this evening, and I support that. But I, but I think that there are numerous points of clarification, some of which I may speak to, some of which may come from others as we progress through the evening. That's all I have for now, sir.
Thank you. Any other, yes, Councilman Ossmano?
So along that vein, I know that, so then under the agreement, we would approve a budget each year, and the chamber was expected to follow that budget. So, and they wouldn't come back to us with any changes or report at the end of the year what their actual expenditures were, correct?
They came back and they gave a overview of the program that they did through the year, the things that they did. They gave every council member a nice, you know, portfolio full of the map and the directory. And in there, I did not, I went to the vault, someone came with me, we pulled them, I didn't see any financial statements.
Right.
It was all the things that they had produced.
So it was our, we were operating on the assumption that they expended exactly their budget for each line item that they had presented to us at the beginning of the year?
I wasn't, I came in March second, so I, I don't know what they presumed. I mean, you're asking me to guess. I don't know.
Yeah, and I wasn't, I mean, I wasn't, I was only here for the last two years, so I don't, I don't know either. And so I guess, because it would seem unrealistic to believe that was the way we operated, that we just...
Well, put yourself in the shoes for the last two years. How did you presume every year?
The presumption was that that was the budget, like any city department has a budget that they estimate what their expenditures are going to be. We fund it, and then they expend the money as, as needed, as close, hopefully as close to those estimates as possible. And I guess part of what I have trouble understanding, we say they expended their, their budget for the year. We only give them a certain amount what they asked for, right? The CBB would come and say, we need two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to, for this year. We gave them two fifty, and they spend two seventy-five. Where did the twenty-five come from?
Over the years, the agreement, I'm not sure exactly what year it started, but I found agreement back to oh-two when there was, they just received one-third of the TOT, and nothing was capped. And there was cash that had accumulated. There were years that they underspent the budget, and there was cash in the account, so...
So I guess, you know, to, part of this concern about, you know, an audit versus what was done here is I think there was, and I believe I expressed this at the last meeting when we went forward with the audit, was that it seemed like there needed to be a determination of what was allowable under the agreement and what wasn't, right? And separate those two buckets of monies. And then also what monies were spent on legitimate CBB functions that may not have been permissible under the agreement if we're applying these terms of the agreement, and what monies were spent that were not permissible by the agreement and did not serve a legitimate CBB function. Because I think at the end of the day, that's what we want to know is where was there money that didn't go to support the mission of the CBB where it was just clearly misspent and needs to be paid back to the city versus technical, you know, technically this money wasn't allowed because it went over a line item on the budget, even though it went towards a legitimate CBB function and something that the city sort of supported. And so I guess that's, I guess what I was hoping to get back through this process, and I thought that's why, you know, we had two councilors appointed to the subcommittee, and that that was going to be part of that review, was making that sort of judgment call about what was legitimate.
Real quick, so what is legitimate? Define that for me.
I think it was in, to achieve the goal of the CBB, so if it was a marketing function or it was community grant support, like there was, I know there was a large line item for the, for the track and field event that happened at CSU Stanfords, it was, I think, twenty or thirty thousand dollars. I think we all, the council at the time, I know I wasn't here, but the press, everybody knew that was something that we were pursuing, and the CBB was involved, there was money from the CBB, the city knew that that money was coming from CBB, but it was never part of their budget.
But isn't that a loose interpretation of legitimate? I guess the question is, every year when a budget's passed, that's an individual coming forward and saying, this is what we will spend it for. The council has an official discussion and says, yes, we passed this budget. So that's declaring whether that's legitimate or not. So that's the litmus test right there, whether it's legitimate each year. Now, what he performed, Kemper, is a compliance, a compliance audit, whatever you'd like to call it, to see what matches up, right? It shouldn't be up to a two-member ad hoc committee or the press and the media to determine what's legitimate or not. Every year annually, when they come forward for whoever it is, for a contract, to say this is the budget and what we'll spend it on, that's going to determine the legitimate expenditure for CBB purposes. I think that's, that's my interpretation, and that's like what I think.
I guess, and I guess I would agree with that if it wasn't a fixed amount they were getting every year, we knew this was, here's the money you have to perform your services. You know, if it was sort of open-ended and they were just taking more money out just to spend it as they saw fit, then I think that's obviously problematic. But knowing that we're saying they had money in the bank, extra money, and then they had their budget amount that we gave them, and they see opportunities like the, I can't remember the name of the event, Amy, what was it, the track and field event, the NCAA?
I'm just going to make your point, sorry.
So, yeah, so I mean, they see opportunities like that, or like when we try to get the Amgen tour or whatever, I don't know if they even spent money on that, but things like that, where they say, we've got extra money in our account, we're going to expend it this year to pursue this activity. And I guess, I guess under the terms of the agreement, they should have came back to us and said, is it okay if we spend extra money that we have saved from previous years for this activity? Is that my...
That's what the agreement says, within forty-five days.
And I'm staring at about half a dozen directors over here who we budget every year for them, and if they don't spend all their money, we don't give them the latitude just to spend it however they deem fit. We make them come back to us, and they make it, we make them bring it back to us. You sat on the budget subcommittee with me, where we determine as a council what the priorities are. So why would this be different?
No, I'm not saying it is, but we weren't asked, we never asked them to come back each year with an actual expenditure of what they spent, right?
No, I agree, and that's problematic, absolutely.
Yeah, and it absolutely is. I mean, I think it's, the crux of the issue is the way this was designed, there was no...
But it doesn't give them the right just because we, we don't, because it doesn't just automatically give them the right because we don't specifically say that they can spend whatever they have, because they have leftover money as department heads to just roll it over and spend it however they want, right? That still is the obligation to bring it back to the council, yes.
Just a few comments, and hopefully I can answer some of the questions that have been brought up. I'll try to recall them, because they go back to Mr. DeHart, some of his comments as well. We did observe that there would be some movement around of funds or adjustments made to change the category that they fell within. So if the administrative services were overspent, then some of that money sometimes was moved to another category. So some of that had occurred. And as I understand it as well, I mean, if there were budget revisions to be made, I mean, they had the opportunity to request those budget revisions or changes to move monies around. And I didn't see any evidence that there were any requests for budget revisions. One of the items too, under the contract, that was supposed to have happened, and this may get back to the reporting, it says, "Chamber shall place said monies in a tourism fund and shall make an accounting of monies expended from said fund at least annually each February during the term of this agreement. Such accounting is to be in a form acceptable to the city and is to be submitted to the city by chamber's accountant." That apparently I don't think was ever complied with. Okay, so that alone, you know, they're out of compliance with the agreement because they never made any financial reporting to the chamber. They did annual reports that kind of summarized what their activities were, but there were never any actual financial reports of what their actual expenditures were or in comparison to the budget. So there weren't, there wasn't any reporting that they were held to that might then give you the information you need to see if their actual expenditures exceeded any particular budgeted line item. So that might point to a little lack of oversight by the city. I mean, you had that right to that, and if it was not provided, then you should have put your foot down, so to speak, and asked for it, okay? So that was not ever there. So it's not that there's fault on any one side or the other. I think it's a joint, jointly held problem, so...
Thanks, Lambert. You answered a question that I had for later. Because I was going to ask, if there was any template, was there any file that either we had on board that supplied an acceptable format to receive their report? And that would be rather telling if we did. Unfortunately, we do not. Typically, GAAP provision is not going to tell us what we want to know. If we have a balance, a, what am I trying to say? If we have a balance sheet, liabilities, assets, even that's not going to tell us until we get down to the notes section where we find out about all the stuff that's irregular about what's come, what comes above. Correct me if I'm wrong. But I think that what we're going to find here is that there are other issues that I don't want to get into them right away, but I think that had we that file, had we that stack of reports, had we those adjustments made, had we those things, both ourselves, chamber, CBB, all would be feeling much better about ourselves, but I don't think we did.
Well, it would have led to, I think, a little more current oversight of the activities, which may have put you then in a position to be able to ask the questions then, when those problems may have occurred or when the adjustments may have taken place, or, you know, but you really don't know what the underlying expenditures really were, even in that report. I mean, you'd have these line items, but you wouldn't know exactly how much was spent where. Now, there were a couple items in there. I think somebody talked about the appropriateness of the expense for CBB purpose. Well, I'll just point to one, where there was expenditure made for someone's registration as a notary public or their class or fees for that. Well, what purpose does that have for the CBB? Unless they're regularly and routinely having to sign agreements that require a notary, of course, they can always come to the city and get that signed here for probably free because there's notaries in the city. But, so there were some of that activity that, you know, didn't appear as though that were an expenditure that would have been a CBB type of expenditure. And so that one, of course, we're going to say is non-compliant because we didn't see it as serving a CBB purpose.
Can you highlight a few more that you, that stuck out to you that, for example, when I was going through it, there are some that were labeled for chamber purposes, and they were specifically labeled that way? Can you, can you go into some of that detail?
September's a little more familiar with the actual details of that, so she might be able to figure it out.
Not line by line, it doesn't have to go all night.
Pick out a couple and...
Well, I think, just to comment on that, I noticed that was probably some of the reasons why we picked, oh, excuse me, some of the reasons why we chose the transactions that we chose. They had specific memos in their line items that kind of led to questions, okay? And so when we picked those, a lot of times we did notice that what was happening is, what should have happened was a reimbursement should have been made to the chamber because it appears that it could have been a valid expense, okay? And therefore, the chamber then could have turned around and made a payment to a specific vendor, and it kind, so it should have gone like this, okay? And what happened was it just went from here to here. So it may not be that it's not a valid transaction, it just took the wrong path, okay? And I hope I'm answering your question kind of on that. I mean, some of the memos, you know, they say things like to pay for the chamber's this and that, and it was out of maybe chamber admin is where it was happening, where they were supposed to be getting this, you know, at some years ninety-eight thousand, let's just go for that, ninety-eight thousand, okay? And they had valid expenses that tied up to the ninety-eight thousand. All their overhead fees were being paid out of the chamber, and so what should have happened is those expenses should have been paid back to the chamber, okay? Because they were valid costs and it should have gone back over to there. So let's say they expensed all ninety-eight thousand, they should have gotten a full ninety-eight thousand paid to them. But instead of paying it back to themselves, they turned around and then paying it to the right vendor, they just went, skipped here and went straight to the vendor. So in reality, it was due to them, it just, it doesn't look good, okay? And that's what we kind of talk about, this alter ego, is to the fact that they're kind of making it look like these are not good paper transactions, but they could be, okay? I mean, it's...
You've got some line items there that...
I think some examples would be helpful.
Some examples of expenditures that would not qualify under the agreement because they didn't serve the CBB purpose. I believe there was an expenditure in there for some monies for a chamber board function, okay? Whether that's directly related to CBB or not, it appears as though maybe it is not. You've got, I believe...
There were two items that got reclassified out of the chamber admin for, one was for twelve thousand, five hundred and thirty-four dollars and one cent, and it was for Dessa's additional time spent marketing CBB. But from what we understand is a hundred percent of her wages were already being, supposedly being reimbursed under that administrative fees breakdown. So when you look at that, it's hard to understand how she could already have a hundred percent of her wages being reimbursed as part of that captured cost, yet another twelve thousand is getting added to marketing as an expense. There were two of those. She had another one for, another one was done for one thousand four hundred and twenty-three dollars and seventy-one cents.
So what you're saying is that very possibly it could be a rational explanation, we just don't have it?
Correct, and/or we don't have supporting documentation to verify those items.
Yeah, I guess that's what I wanted, is that I kind of expected that through this report, we would have those segregated out as a separate, you know, add all those up that were, hey, these just seem like they're, they're not, have anything to do with the CBB carrying out their mission, or were potentially misspent out of this, out of this fund. And I don't believe that was done correctly, I mean...
And I guess we did, oh, go ahead.
We didn't segregate the classifications that way. I think we can, it's just a matter of sorting them a little bit differently so that you can come up with the amount of the expenditures that are strictly non-compliant with the agreement because of the nature of the expenditure. I think that's what you're wanting, isn't it?
Yeah, right, because I think...
As opposed to those that are just lacking in supporting documentation.
Right, because you have different, you have lacking supporting documentation, you have some that seem like they're not legitimate expenditures, and you have others that simply didn't comply with the agreement, which is sort of, I guess for me, it seems like a, I don't know, it didn't comply with the agreement, but it was still in support of the CBB and what they were supposed to be doing. And so I guess by lumping them all together, it makes it hard to kind of figure out what, how much money are we actually talking about that is, you know, was misspent versus, you know, bad accounting?
Well, I guess that's my question. So here you, to take that last example, the budget looks, and a hundred percent of DSS, who was an employee of CBB, was already spent and paid for. Now, there's another line item for twelve thousand additional dollars for her budget. Now, you could argue, okay, she's an employee of CBB, so she's carrying out the CBB mission, but again, that's blatantly against what the contract says because she's already been paid, why would there be an additional twelve thousand dollars paid there? So what piece of document would you like to see that would justify that for you?
I don't know if there is one. I would like, what I would like to see is that... That categorized somewhere separately, saying that this, right, because it's, there are definitely questionable expenditures in here, and I would like to see those tallied up, because at some point, I'm looking to see what should be owed back to the city that wasn't, that was spent in ways that the city can't defend, right? And that money should be paid back to the city. And there are other items that just seem like they're just accounting technicalities that, you know, add up to three hundred thousand dollars. It's not that they misspent three hundred thousand dollars, it's that the accounting wasn't there, or, you know, technically by the terms of our agreement, they went, they went over, extend money saved up, they overspent on things.
You just air quote technically? It's great. I think, I think it's just something...
Mayor, if it's a point of personal preference, you could let me finish, please.
Well, absolutely. I just, I guess I'm trying to get to a point of, we have a, we have a contract that we've adopted a budget, and you obviously, we adopt a budget annually, but you think that there should still be leeway with extra cash that's held over from year to year, so it should be leeway, that technically, even though there's not a receipt, that if it's for the good of the order, that's okay. I'm just, I'm just trying to, I'm confused because you want a black and white picture of what was misspent, but then I'm not seeing a black and white litmus test that you're providing. I'm confused.
Yeah, what I'm saying, I wasn't part of this process, and so what I'm questioning is, that's what I thought we were going to be getting, and we didn't. So now I'm asking these questions to try to help us get there. And I think a part of that is just trying to figure out, and it seems like it's pretty clear now, that had we, as an organization dating back to whenever this agreement was originally approved, two thousand two or before, enforced the contract and said, you have to come back to us each year with what you spent, and if I understand the contract correctly, if they came back to us and said, okay, you budgeted two hundred and fifty thousand for us, but we actually spent two hundred and sixty-three thousand, and here's why, and we approved that report saying, okay, we agree with what you did, they would have been in compliance with the, with the agreement. But we never, they didn't do it, and we didn't ever ask them to do it. And nobody, it seemed like there's been, you know, twenty councils since then, and nobody's enforced the provisions of that contract, and I think that's unfortunate.
Until now. So, real quick, just real quick, I think your answer's actually here when it comes to compliant versus non-compliant. You've broken it down with sufficient documentation, without sufficient documentation. Can you go into those totals? Because I think that answers Councilman Nafnella's issues.
Yeah, I was going to mention, the information is in the report. It's a matter of breaking it down or pulling it out to get the categories that you want. Like I said, I mean, if we resorted it in a different manner to get those amounts, then that I think would give you the numbers that you're looking for. I don't know if you have the...
I just think that would be helpful, as we go forward, the mayor works with the chair. I think it'd be helpful for the mayor to have that information as we go forward.
Right, I think so, and I think that all the line items are there, but...
Yeah, I mean, staff can actually go through the report and total which ones are strictly non-compliant versus non-compliant because of lack of supporting documentation. Now, you referred to accounting techn...
Technicality.
Technicality. And, you know, although, you know, lack of supporting documentation can be considered a technicality, but it could reflect quite largely on the expenditure to prove that it was really for what the stated purpose was. So I don't want to totally discount the lack of support as a technicality because it could weigh heavily.
Yeah, when I was, with technicality, I wasn't talking about the lack of support, is that when they say they budgeted, you know, ten thousand for marketing purposes and ten thousand dollars for supplies, and then they underspent their supplies, they only spent seven thousand dollars for supplies that year, and they decided to use that extra three thousand then for additional marketing. And I don't know if this happened in your guys' review, but I know when our staff went through this, is we would ding them both times, where they underspent their, they underspent their supplies by three thousand, so now we add three thousand to what they owe back to the city, or what was unallowable that they should have given back, and then we asked them to pay back the three thousand they overspent in marketing. So we end up counting the same dollars twice, and they're penalized both. So to me, that's sort of a technicality in that they're being asked to repay funds that...
Is that fully how this is... Is that fully how this is occurring? I don't think it is, Kelly, can you explain?
It, when we looked at it, we did it in total for the year. We didn't look at each, like, marketing, um, office supplies, travel, we did it in total.
Okay, so that's different from what we did before, though, correct? 'Cause last time, that was, you know, a point of contention that we-
Right, and we have it by line item, but when we went back through and added these up, we did it if they, only if they exceeded in total for the year, regardless of what line item they spent it on.
Right, okay.
Um, and, and we do have, I'm not sure, I mean, this report has what you, what you've asked, maybe just not the totals, and I have the totals. And that's just, like they said, the way it was sorted. I'm not sure what the report is lacking, everything you asked for, what was compliant, what's not, that's what they did.
Right, and so I think, but that was never totaled, so we have this little chart here with, with different totals.
Right.
And I think-
Okay, and I added them up. So, when you went through, and I, I know you went through and read, and you saw the notes, there's different notes that, um, identify. There are ones, the transactions that state that they were unsupported, appear in compliance, and didn't exceed the budget, meaning for that year, okay? Those total fifteen thousand, six hundred, fifty-three dollars and nine cents. Okay, the transactions that say that they are unsupported, appear compliant, exceed the annual budget for the year, in total for the year. That's te- um, those are years ten, twelve, and fourteen. And a green sheet you've been provided shows those, what years they went over in total. Those total forty-eight thousand, one hundred, thirty-nine dollars and eighty cents. The total charges to the city for the directory, which no invoices were ever provided, were fifty-four thousand, six hundred. The total charges to the city for the official city map, and the only invoices that were provided were from Seeger's Printing, and they, we have them. Uh, each year, they were between, uh, three to four thousand, and we have those. But the total that the city was charged was fifty-one thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars.
So, fifty-one thousand-
Seven hundred and eighty.
Seven eighty, okay.
For maps?
Correct, for the official city map.
Kelly, was that also for our advertisement that we had to put in there as well?
No, that did not count. The city pays for advertisements in the directory and the city map. And I'm sorry, I, I have it, but one of them's eighteen hundred and fifty dollars, I don't remember what the other one is. I, I've not even counted that, we contributed that, to have our advertisement in there.
Councilman Jacob, yeah?
Um, so, you mentioned, uh, and I, and I, this was sort of something that I was hoping that we would get to. There are, it, um, sort of seems to be like a, a order that the expenses go through, and they start out with, um, supported, unallowable, or not in compliance, and then it goes into unsupported, and, um, and what it, what it says here, expense appears to be in compliance with the agreement. Um, and I guess maybe the question might be for September, or, um, how, what's the rationale that we use if there, if there was no supporting documentation to make that statement that it appears to be in compliance?
Basically, what we used, and, and that's why we asked for the information, um, as the response from the accountants for the chamber and the CVB as to what their theory was for the expense. Because we had, we don't have anything to determine on, so all we can look at is what is in the memo, that was in QuickBooks, and the response that was provided, um, by the outside accountant.
Paul Porter, uh, do you have a microphone?
What's the, uh, record retention amount of time that's, uh, regulated by the IRS and Franchise Tax Board?
The IRS would, uh, like you to keep your records for at least three years past the filing date of your return, and the state is four years. Those, those are the taxing authorities.
And the scope of this is six years?
It goes back to two thousand and nine. That's what, that's what we were asked to do. Now, again, I mean, that's, that's a question, you know, would they, the chamber have been required to retain those records, maybe, maybe not, um-
Do you know how much of the dollar values outside of that dis- or record retention that you're saying, we don't have proper, the chamber doesn't have proper, uh, records for those things from two thousand and nine to two thousand and twelve?
We, we'd have to sort it by, by year, and we, we could, the, the information's there, you can come up with a number just by manipulating the, the data there.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Uh, Councilman Jacob, you still, yeah?
Okay, so just, just to be clear, so-
Yeah, I'm not sure we answered your question fully, but, go ahead.
We're going, we're, we're saying that they appear to be in compliance based purely off of the memos that were attached to them, right? 'Cause the only sort of documentation that we have for some of these are credit card statements.
Correct, I mean, that would be, uh, kind of like taking it at face value, okay? So, based upon the description and the explanations that were provided, and/or whoever the payee was, they appeared as though they could be compli- compliant with the agreement. But without the actual supporting documentation, we can't be sure.
I think, um, Mr. Porter, you bring up a great point about, um, some of the general ac- uh, accounting practices and some of the things that IRS require. When IRS does an audit, do they require documentation for expenditures when they, when they come and ask you to verify your expenses?
If you're asked to verify your expenses, they expect that they're going to see, uh, documentation, which would include invoices and receipts to show what the expenditure was for. And as well, they'd like to see proof of payment, meaning a, um, a canceled check or something of, of that order that proves that the payment was made. And as well, you'd have to prove that it was a legitimate business purpose, and it wasn't extravagant or extreme expenditure. So, those are the things that IRS would be looking for. And, uh, like I said, you know, their ability to go back and audit is for three years. If there's any sort of fraud or understatement of income involved, they can go back six years.
Six years, okay.
Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Any questions or comments from the audience? Sorry, I don't want to overlook you. Nothing? Dr. Wright, do you have anything? Sorry, I saw a twitch, and so I, you want to go up there? Yeah, please, it's microphone.
They have a lot more paper than I do. Mayor, so I said, and, uh, members of the council, thank you for, uh, giving us the opportunity to speak to this. And we have a very, and I mean, very brief, uh, statement in terms of, uh, where we want to go. We want to start by, uh, making it clear that we are, uh, committed to resolve this issue so that we can move on as a, as a council, and a chamber, and, and the community. Um, essentially, 'cause in our, in our conversations and preparing for the meeting, uh, we came up with really two, what we would call, from our perspective, two different, um, uh, differences of opinion on this. And curiously enough, both of them are exactly around most of the conversations and questions that I've heard tonight. Um, yeah, I'm an or- primarily an organization development consultant, and language is important. And, and, you know, when, when, when we hear the word audit, and it's reported in the media as an audit, uh, that has a certain meaning, and per, uh, I'm sorry, Lambert?
Lambert.
Lambert's, you know, in, in their own report, and per his communication, I, that this is not an audit or a review. And we, we debated whether we, whether we thought it was the, the language agreed upon procedure, and we decided to resist putting that in our statement because we want, we wanted to resist getting it wrong. So that's, that's the first point. The second, I think, you know, more importantly, is, is, is around the interpretation of the agreement, interpretation of the contract. You know, i- i- we disagree with Kemper's inter- interpretation of the con- contract to determine their specific analysis. And so what we, we would ask, uh, going forward, is that the chamber would have, and the city would consider the chamber's interpretation of the agreement and addendums as part of, of coming to a resolution. Uh, because we, we have, uh, potentially differing of, of not only opinions, but perspectives from in our own council, that, and our own actions, that, you know, from my view would be, you know, uh, we could be here for a long time tonight, but would be part of, and would be part of our conversations with the mayor. So I want to conclude where, where we started, that, uh, I want to affirm that the chamber stands ready to work with the mayor and the city to resolve this issue and continue our partnership in making Turlock the quality community it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the audience? Anyone else from the council? Councilmember Blue Black.
So, first I want to thank, uh, Kelly Jacobs Hunter and our city attorney Norton for doing a lot of work on this. It's, uh, one of those things that is not the fun jobs, I'm sure, but something that was necessary. And, and they took it very professional, and, uh, just looked at it from a, kind of a clinical aspect, and I appreciate that. Uh, I am disappointed in, in, in the city, and, and I'm part of that. Um, I've been on council for six years. This is a, a very disappointing situation to be in, where we didn't have an oversight on our contracts that we should have. And we've already, uh, addressed that, and so it's part of our strategic plan. And I, I hope that that never happens again, but we are human, everyone in this room is human, we're going to make some errors, and we have to come to a resolution and, and find out how we're going to fix that. Uh, I, I want to talk about the intentions, and nobody's, uh, defending a person or an organization, per se. We're, we're here to defend the taxpayers' money, and just the, the flat note that money is, uh, it's got to be, you have to trust that it's being spent correctly, but you also have to verify it. And that, that's our obligation as, uh, elected officials up here. And anybody who owns a business and, or running a business knows that they want to make sure that everybody's doing their job as well, and so that's what our, our end game was. Um, and then, obviously, we can't just forgive this funding, uh, the, the numbers, whatever it will be, we just can't consider it done because it is public funds, and that would be a gift of public funds, which is illegal. And, uh, I wouldn't advocate for that. But, uh, I believe that the motion on the table will be to, uh, just start that dialogue and come to some conclusion so we can really promote businesses we've always wanted to. And I'll introduce the motion.
Okay. Anything else from the council?
Uh, yes, Mayor, prior to seconding it, which I'd be delighted to do, I do feel that there is a second, uh, issue within the motion itself. And I just bring it up, uh, since our focus is exclusively on clarity and process as we move forward, accountability, uh, custodial responsibilities of public funds, uh, not just consensus, but responsible discussion and, uh, formal resolution proceeding forward. Uh, I do have a, a bit of a challenge, sir, with the wording of the motion, second part. Uh, in saying that, I do have to say, right off the top, that without doubt, categorically, I trust the mayor as a man and in position. I do have to say this, however. I think that it brings us to a dangerous point moving forward, on into the future, to establish a single point for determining resolution of an issue. Even our ad hoc committee had two representatives of the city. There is perhaps a saving grace under the note associated with the motion that says any action to resolve the audit will be presented to the city council for final approval. I guess the reason it caught my attention is because we entered this together. Our vote was unanimous, because we wanted resolution on an issue that, as the vice mayor has pointed out, is truly troubling, and we do have a responsibility. I guess I would make an appeal, sir, that we join together and finish the race that we started together. And, uh, do it as a council committed to finally resolving and putting to bed and getting on with life, uh, ahead of this issue, which has, uh, potentially done some damage that we frankly have to get on to immediately. We have to get on with the repair and get it fixed. I, I thank, uh, uh, Paul for his words, and I think we do need to, uh, move out, move out smartly, and quickly so. I would introduce an amendment to the motion, uh, that would not isolate the mayor. That the mayor would be fully supported, uh, with the council, the quality of council that I believe you have received up to this point in time, uh, in such a way that together we move forward in resolving the issue. I know there are some issues of expedience, but I think that we desperately need to avoid any precedent-setting maneuver with that part to the motion.
I think I'll, I'll speak to that, and I appreciate the kind words ahead of time. I think logistically, it will be almost impossible for the entire council to engage in a conversation with Dr. Wright. Uh, we'd have to agendize the meetings, we would have to get our schedules, uh, put together. I think to quickly resolve this issue, and, uh, I think it's better that there is one person, and I am the spokesperson for this council, that, um, I'm able to meet in confidence with Dr. Wright, or whoever the, the chamber of commerce appoints as their point person, to, uh, figure out and take any and all action, action, any and all necessary actions to resolve this as soon as possible. And as you note, there is a corresponding note to the motion, which says, um, anything that we are able to, uh, work out and come up with, will come before the council for, for a full-on vote. So, um, I don't know, I guess the amendment goes to the person making the motion, so, uh, Vice Mayor, what do you say?
So, I, I respectfully decline, only because it, it is, uh, something that we need to take care of, and it will come back here. And I, uh, I'm a little overzealous about being cautious about the Brown Act. And I think that what will happen is, everybody will be contacted, and the serial contacts and such, that it'll get more convoluted than it needs to be, 'cause this n- just needs to get done, and we need to come to some agreements. And the, the mayor, the city attorney will be present, work with whomever from the chamber, uh, designs this to be, and then they'll bring it back to us, and, and we can have the dialogue in public, and so everyone knows what we're doing.
And I appreciate that, and I don't want to prolong our evening. Uh, but when I sat down here this morning, my chair was still warm from Tuesday evening.
I am sorry.
And we shared together an experience this past Tuesday evening, which involved twelve consecutive weeks of meeting in this chamber to determine strategic direction for the city. It, every last one of those meetings were in fact noticed. Every last one of those meetings were conducted in a very public way. Every last one of those meetings yielded an extremely effective and forward-looking visionary approach to our future as a council. And it's in that spirit that I offered that amendment, none other.
Can I, can I, um, ask, in your sort of, uh, estimation, how many meetings would it take to hash this out with, with the chamber?
I'm not-
Sort of, in, 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 in response to Councilmember DeHart, you know, do we, do we want to commit to? I, I'm just trying to get an idea of how many, how many meetings that would look like, and if we want to commit to that at all.
I'm not sure, but I think that the, the flexibility is what we're, we're looking for. We want to get to the bottom of it, we want to be able to hash out these numbers. And I'm not sure if, if the most productive conversation will happen when it's an agendized meeting, um, uh, with all five of us trying to weigh in. To be honest, to use your same analogy, um, the strategic plan, you're right, we all sat here around the table to work on it, but there's significant work that was done one-on-one with staff to get that strategic plan to the point where we could adopt it. And if we had, were hindered by all five of us having to get together to meet a quorum to have those dialogues and those discussions, I don't think we would be able to pass the strategic plan in nearly the time or, or fashion that we needed to. Um, you know, I, I, I think this motion allows the flexibility to, uh, discuss the findings, to discuss the best way forward, how to mend that broken partnership that I keep talking about. And that's why I, I think that it's, it's appropriate. So, like I said, everything that would be, uh, discussed would be brought back here for, uh, final approval by the council. But again, I, I go back to the Vice Mayor, whose motion's on the floor, and see if you accept the amendment again.
May I just add, Mayor, would it, since we're, it's sort of like a, a one-man subcommittee, would, would you entertain the idea of, of, since, obviously, Councilmember DeHart has an interest in cer- in being involved, would you entertain adding him to that as a subcommittee of, of yourself and Councilmember DeHart?
I don't think that, well, it's, it's up to the council, but again, I think that a unilateral leader of the, of the chamber discussing with the spokesperson from this council on the best path forward is the most constructive way to go about this. But again, I will entertain whatever motions this council puts forward, and there's a motion on the floor from the Vice Mayor, and so I will look to her to see if she wants to amend it, or I will look for a second.
There, I, I don't think there's an interest, but I'll, I just wanted to make a statement. I, I too wanted to thank, um, our staff and, uh, members of the chamber board, um, their accounting team, and, and all the folks who have been going through this process over the last couple of months. I know it's not been fun on either side, it's been very frustrating, um, and, uh, you know, we, we feel that frustration here as well. And I'm just glad to have us at this point, um, I think that- And I'm just glad to have us at this point. I think that this document, although it may not have been in the format that I had hoped, I think it has the information in there that we need in order to move forward and resolve this issue. And I look forward to rebuilding the partnership between this council and the Chamber of Commerce, this community and our business community. Cause we have achieved great things together and I believe that we can continue to do that in the future. And I look forward to having this resolved and passed us.
Yes. Councilman DeHart?
Mayor, in the spirit of my original proposal, but certainly in the vice mayor's advance of the motion, I will withdraw my amendment. But I would like to have as part of the official record that we exercise extreme caution moving forward on into the future. That we ensure that, what was I going to say, Roy?
It sounded good.
And usually I do until I don't. So I, I think that it's critically important that number one, we move forward together. This is not something, this is an entire community. There is some expedience involved in mayor, CEO of chamber. I get all that. But there are so many little subplots throughout this entire discussion this evening that frankly are, have captured my attention and I find quite disturbing. Not the least of which is, we ask for one thing, we get another. Mayor, I trust you to be able to sort that out. And I will second the vice mayor's motion, advance of the motion. I think that we need desperately to ensure that we sharpen our tools to the extent that what we ask for is what we mean to ask for, that what we get is what we intended to receive and that we not parse words about whether it is a this or a that or a not a this or that and move forward smartly to resolve this issue. I will second the motion.
I have a motion to accept what's on, what's put forward and a second. Before I call the rolls, in the spirit of Councilman DeHart's amendments, did you, again, you have the original motion. You are the ad hoc committee chair. You are the vice mayor. If you want to entertain an amendment to add another individual and I would think you would be a very good addition to that as with your role and your expertise in knowing this. But that's the only thing I'll entertain. But there's a motion and a second.
I appreciate the motion. Life brings, the more people to the table, the more emotions and different perspectives. And I think this way, it's the most clinical way to do it as well. So that you just come forward, bring the facts together, argue the points and bring it back to us. And then we can discuss it in public and share those thoughts. So.
All right. We have a motion by Vice Mayor Bublock, seconded by Councilmember DeHart. Clerk, please call the roll.
Absolutely. Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. Yes, motion carries five to zero. Thank you all so much for coming. I look forward to discussing things with you. Thank you so much, Kemper. You did an excellent job. We really appreciate it, all your hard work. And especially internally to the city attorney and to our administrative services director. You and your teams worked very diligently and very hard and very professionally on this. And so I thank you. So with that, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilmember DeHart, seconded by Councilmember Noceno. All those in favor signify by saying aye. We're adjourned.